Janet Mueller.
Present.
Chad Lantus.
Tom Kelly.
Present.
Miles Stevenson, present.
Present.
Randy Bucher.
Present.
Okay. We'll move on to item number five with it, which is the consent agenda items. Do I have a motion for five A approval of the minutes of the regular meetings on two eleven twenty-five? And the approval of the general fund, February's is five four hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty cents. And March is four hundred and forty-seven thousand fifty dollars and seventy-five cents.
So moved.
I got a first, do I have a second?
Second.
First and second roll call, please.
Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Chad Lantus. Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Miles Stevenson, yes. Eric Turka.
Yes.
Randy Bucher.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item six is treasurer's report. Tom, do you want to give the the percentages for us, please?
Sure, expenses and revenue came in under budget, expenses at forty-four point one oh should be at fifty-eight, revenue forty-six point three oh should be at fifty.
Ted, do you have any other comments or any kind of a budget?
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number seven, which is recognition of visitors' public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, this is the appropriate time to do so, or if you'd rather comment on a specific agenda item, you may do so at this time. Please stand and state your name and address for the record. Individuals may speak only one time unless limited comments to five minutes. If there's more than six individuals who wish to speak, the thirty minutes will be divided equally between the number speakers. If you're planning to speak about personnel or a student matter involving an individual, please understand that the district has a complaint policy procedures to resolve such complaints concerned. Board members will generally not respond to any questions you ask or comments about individual staff members or students. This is a public meeting for the conduct of business. Comments from the audience while others are speaking will not be tolerated. The board will not act on any matter unless it is on the published gym dial. So with that being stated, I know we have at least one. Sarah.
Sarah and John Paul Foster, two nine six four six west, Dayton Drive. Um, we have a proposal to buy a lot of land as a very, um, streams.
I believe, is it Carson?
Yes, the two being of this to all of us.
Oh, yes, yes, I did. What do you guys think?
Uh, again, what we need you to do is to present all of your points at this point, and then we will go into a closed session at the end of this thing to discuss potentially that or what we want to do with that that lot in general. So this is just more of any more highlights you would like to go over with us, things that might persuade us one way or the other.
Um, really, we're just wanting to daycare there. Um, I think that we could use it in the town. Um, we are not opposed to using the classrooms, but they're not completely ideal in either the daycare. You have kids body training, you have to lock them down the whole. I mean, if they work, but they, it would be better if we had our own space. Um, that way we're not fight, they're not fighting, but we have plenty of time to be outside um, without interrupting school kids. Um, and I've heard or know that they're using those rooms for home ec, which I think is awesome, and I really don't want to take from those rooms. Um, and if all the big developments happen within the next five to ten years, like they're saying, I think daycare is going to be a big issue. Um, we have all of our buildings instead of planned out. We've got bids. We're just kind of waiting on the land and so I guess that's our stop.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll ask one question. Has there been any changes to this?
No.
Okay. Now it's all you tonight. Thank you.
And we have talked to a realtor and stuff about what they suggested.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to me? Hearing them, let's go on to the next item of business, which is eight A, which is the principal contracts. They were uploaded. Everybody should have been able to look at them. Do I have a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six principal contract for Bree and McCon.
So.
Well, first, do I have a second?
Second.
A second, any more discussion? Hearing them, roll call.
Um, Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Randy Bucher.
Yes.
Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Chad Lantus. Miles Stevenson, yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Do I have a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six principal contract for Jason Anderson?
So moved.
Got a first, do I have a second?
Second.
A second, any more discussion? Hearing them, roll call.
Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Chad Lantus, Kyle Stevenson. Yes, Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Randy Bucher.
Yes.
Motion carried. Hey, uh, again, thank you to both of you. Jason, welcome aboard as a principal. Great, thank you for everything you've done. Let's move on to the teachers' contracts, eight D. Do I have a motion to prove that? Well, first of all, do you want to have some comments on this?
Um, not very much, but I'm really pleased about the people that that we, that Southern got that applied for these positions that we opened up. And then we, so we got some really quality people. I can, I can assure you of that based on, on what I visited with them. Principals have told me about them, so I'm, I'm really pleased about that, and so that's probably all.
Okay, let's go on with the motion. So the first one was approve the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six contract for Katie Stevenson.
Go ahead.
They got a first. Mr. Munder got a second. Okay, first and second. Any more discussion? Hearing them. Why are you turning his head in your shirt?
I don't know. Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Uh, Kyle Stevenson abstaining. Uh, Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Randy Bucher.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Let's go on to the second one, which is the, a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six contract for Jane Die.
So moved.
Got a first, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing them, roll call.
Um, Randy Bucher.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Miles Stevenson, yes. Janet Mueller.
Yes, motion carried. Thank you. And the third one for teachers' contract is, do I have a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six contract for Olivia Freeze?
So moved.
Yeah, first, do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, first and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing them, roll call.
Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Randy Bucher.
Yes.
Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Kyle Stevenson, yes.
Motion carried. Let's go on to eight C, issue contracts. Um, there is an increase from last year of about forty-eight thousand seven hundred. The conversation that Mr. Carson and I had is, uh, there was some, uh, parents had asked for testing of their children from birth to five years, and several of these children do. When they tested, they did qualify for the issue services. That's increasing the number of students that will be utilizing their services. Um, additionally, the district will be utilizing a deaf educator provided by the ESU as well. Any more comments on that?
That's, that's primarily what they said that the increases were. Now, they did say that Jennifer Olson, she said that she would come and visit with you about ESU, uh, specialty costs and different things like that. She, I think she's visiting the board tonight, so she will come and give you more information if you would like to have that, at a meeting.
I, I think it would be interesting. I didn't realize that we're paying her student.
That's, that's how they break it down. And, and they estimate we have X amount. That's, that's what, if she was here, that would be a great question.
I was under the impression we pay for them to test birth to five, and it shouldn't matter how many qualify or not, like we pay for the testing.
Did she say that it's because of an increase, like throughout their region, not specifically just us, but just an increase throughout the region?
That is what she said there exactly. I talked to Hannah, I didn't get
Okay.
And, and that was probably a, a bit not as good information. But that must be, it must be because, uh, that she said specifically that we had just the first five, and like you said, you told me that as well.
We, we have had significant increase in the means of head. Those students be complicated, um, qualifications.
And so tha- that's the services that we're going to require up above what happened on it. And then the deaf educator, but to give you specific amounts, I, Randy, I can't do that. But I can, I, I will invite her to come if you would like that, and just listen. Because I would come get all that myself.
Yeah, I, I would like to know kind of if I to me, I guess I, it shouldn't matter how many kids we have tested. I understand for an additional service of a, of a deaf educator, but
I think we have contracted the deaf at them, like they've sub
There would be an early childhood.
That's why.
I don't think they, it's not on how many they test. I think it's come by services in our youth child.
Yeah, I, I would like them to come talk to us and explain. That's a large increase.
Do we have options? That sounds, I mean, I mean, that's five employees. I mean, is, is there something else that we can do? Is that?
The only thing I've, I've ever been able to say to that, Eric, is that uh, we, we could not hire, hire the same qualified kind of people to come in and do those services. That's, that would be the problem. That's, that's what I have always heard.
There's a shortage.
That's what I've always used because there's, there's just not out there. One of you, Wenzels, uh, Allison, if you
Well, there's a shortage, like to hire district own speech, language pathologists within a building, then pay all their benefits and so on and so forth. We have someone come two days a week. She is busy. I mean, she's busy from the time she gets here to the time she leaves. To hire some of these people, it's hard to find because they're having a shortage.
And just so you guys know what this includes, so it's OT, PT, SLP services, um, deaf ed, um, and early childhood special education services, so I mean, it, it is, I mean, we have to have these services. It's, it's a lot, but I think the only way that districts do it outside of an ESU is contracting themselves or in coordination with other districts to share outside of the ESU.
And there's a lot of it is driven by statute.
It's, we have to contribute to the ESU per state statute here regardless.
So there's only somebody here two days a week?
For speech.
Or just for speech?
I think it'd be good if they would comment.
You try to pitch down.
That's ten percent with.
Yes.
Yeah.
All, all, all.
Yes. P O H L S O N.
And we have two segments that go full time to owls.
I was gonna say owls.
That would be, yeah.
That's a big cost.
And that's something I've never had before, so.
I'm sure.
No, but that's just, I've never, I've never had owls, and that's worse. It's white and gold, truly.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a little advice under Harlem and just to explain, you know, the breakdown.
That would be good, yeah, just to understand the breakdown.
Yes.
So would the board like to table this until we have that conversation with them? Or what is the
I'd like to make a motion to table it until we can talk to them. I mean, it's that's a ten percent job. I don't know, we approved last year.
Three.
Are we doing a ten percent every year?
This is what you can, you can, that's what you proved last year. How often are you, is it timeline on?
Yeah. I, is it going to be an issue if we table it for one month?
But the next question, if it'd be an issue till
Yeah, four years soon. See, I can't remember what.
I mean, they don't start.
Yeah, this says from September, but I didn't, I didn't.
Did you get, did you?
Yeah, then I have, I, I see what I'm saying. Yeah.
This one?
So my ten percent have already, so you're right. It's low. It's gonna be higher, right?
Forty.
Yeah.
Right. Like forty-eight thousand, like fifteen. Forty-eight thousand dollar increase over three fifty-one. I don't know, I mean, it's not from
No, there's, there's nothing we can do. I just was curious how, boy, if we could utilize more staff and have them here five days a week instead of two.
Well, I think it's Please return the signed agreements by two issues sixteen by April first is what it says.
April one.
Our next meeting's not until the eighth.
So we have to do it now.
Well, can, you could always call.
I think so. I think it could for an extension based on them coming.
Maybe we just, I'll call them and say
I think so.
We need some, we need some explanation about this.
Yeah.
And even if it has to be a, a special meeting. They've got a breakdown here of her kid, her student.
Great. I don't know how often, like, PT is lower, I know OT comes quite often.
Mm-hmm. I think what's hard is when it's not on the agenda for us to see.
That's
Very tricky meeting. On the numbers.
Oh, there's
I think that gets, get concerned with things.
Just especially I usually, I know it's good to be all the speech is huge.
It's almost a five thousand.
Yeah. And I will say, I mean, Obalala's had an SLP opening. They're going on two years right now. Um, North Platte can't hardly, I mean, you to staff, yeah, which is not ideal.
Oh, no, I don't like to do
So it's, it's hard to find them.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we, if we had some insight, we paid them, it'd be five days worth of help instead of
In an ideal, in an ideal world, I would love that. I just worry that we wouldn't find.
I think the reason we tabled it last year was the same discussion, if I remember correctly, is because of the increase last year. And it was quite large as well.
A special meeting?
I'll go to the board.
Could we, could we ask them if it would be okay if we got them the contract after our April board meeting? Because we would really like to have some information.
We need
And if the answer is no, then we may have to
Have a special
Come back together. But I would think that a week's difference wouldn't be a big deal.
I'll second Eric's motion.
Got a first and a second to table this until our next meeting or a special meeting? Any more discussion? Hearing that roll call.
Um, Chad Lantus, yes. Miles Stevenson, yes. Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Randy Bucher.
Yes.
Janet Mueller.
Yes. Let's go on with the next item. Can I have those two sheets back though?
Yes.
Okay, eight D is, uh, Calvert consultation work. Are you not, it'll be the rest. Much, not that. We'll just hold them all up. Um, eight D is Calvert consultation work.
Yeah, uh, he's going to be an interim superintendent at Wood City. And, um, KSB said, told their board, I think Steve Williams working with their board, they said, you have to have some kind of statement from this board saying that's all right if they want to do some consulting. Because then, because Paul told me they got several people to hire there when he's not teaching here. That's what, that's what this is about, is your, your permission for him to go ahead and consult when he's not teaching here. It cannot affect this, his job here at all. Well, that's what, that's what it is, and, and Bobby should, that's, yeah, he should, that's stand.
And we've done it prior with both of these principals right here. So this is anything, we have reversed it and asked for the same thing. So with that being said, do I have a motion? So, yeah, the first, is that our second?
Second.
First and second, any more discussion? Hearing them, roll call.
Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Chad Lantus, yes. Miles Stevenson, yes. Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Randy Bucher.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Um, next item is resignations, and there's none in that area. So then the next one is option students. Who would like to talk about those?
We have three, the Seelanders. Children that would have been going to school here uh, already all year long. I, I don't know, maybe they've been here longer than that.
It's been this year.
Okay, just this year, they're moving two, two miles into the Hershey District. And so we have to get option papers and Jane sign those. Um, we are going to pick them up at Old Fallon, and we are in our district. We're going to pick those three kids up at the intersection of Old Fallon's and Powder, or Power Road. That, we're going to do that, pick them up and drop them off there. So it's right inside of our district. Yes.
That's on the south side by.
No. It's the south route, it's over to shit.
Yeah. Can you pick up anymore while you're there?
Well.
Okay.
Short spot. I'd love to. But only certain schools can do that.
I know.
Not everybody can do that. That's, that's it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. My, uh, the first, do I have a second? Second, any more discussion? Roll call?
Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Chad Lantus. Yes. Kyle Stevenson, yes. Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Randy Bucher.
Yes.
And you want to make a Phoenix.
Yes, yes. So who wants to? I'll see what your reason is why she's coming in, because her dad's already talked to you and wants about this one so much. I think everybody
He's coming in because she wanted to work with our basketball coach, John Bill. So that's why she's opting in for next year in football.
Is this?
Phoenix Brown, I'm just Should be a sophomore.
Supposedly, there was another student coming with her from another, yes, well, for the same reasons.
I'm waiting for it. It's, it's exciting, though, and, and, and talking to mom, too. There's something to be said for small schools, and I'm glad they're looking at ours, and it's that positive word of now. But I feel like we've all worked really hard on this year. It helps, and
She's coming from North Platte.
So. Awesome. Talk to my husband. And it's talking my
It was a combined effort, so thank you all of this.
Yes. So. So do I have a motion to approve the option for Phoenix Brown? First with Chad. Second, I'll do it, Janet. Any more discussion? Hearing them, roll call.
Randy Bucher.
Yes.
Eric Turka.
Yes.
Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Miles Stevenson, yes. Chad Lantus. Janet Mueller.
Yes. And motion carried. Let's go on to item number nine, which is the reports. Uh, elementary report, Ms. Pritchard.
Um, excuse me. February student of the month, preschool, we had Taysom, Aiden, and Beckett. Brady kindergarten, we had Careworse and Dean and Zod. First grade striker, Raspberry. Second grade, Bill White. Third grade, they didn't even talk, but they had Dayton Nicholson and Eddie Nicholson. I thought that was interesting. We didn't talk to each other. Fourth grade was Ky- Kyler Brunz. Fifth grade was Ava Basin, and sixth grade was Rea Condon, so they got their, uh, little gift card and, um, their certificate, so enjoyed that, and then they'll get their picture taken. Uh, Ms. Pritchard has finished all the twenty-four, twenty-five classified and certified evaluations. I'm finishing up a few teacher meetings. I did three this week, um, that just meeting, going over it with them, talking about strengths and, um, things we can put in our toolbox. So those are finished. The elementary third quarter awards ceremony will be held on Thursday, March thirteenth. The kindergarten through second grade will begin at twelve fifteen. And the third through sixth grade will begin at two thirty, and the South Gym and families are welcome to celebrate their student. We did hit for some Facebook calls, so uh, this week, March eleventh through the fourteenth, is the book fair will be held. Tuesday through Friday, books are on display in the quote-unquote old daycare rooms from seven thirty to eight, three forty-five to four, and Friday night during our penny carnival, from five to seven, we'll have a PBIS, um, penny carnival for the kiddos. Friday night, the book fair will be displayed in the commons, so we're, we're all looking forward to that this week. And, um, I should add in here that, uh, Mr. Zane and his Woods class, they were instrumental in helping us make and come up with some of our games, so I appreciate that their hard work. This is Sanberg, Miss Stoffer and I, we developed our NSGAS and our NWA assessment test schedules. Um, testing will begin April first. And the teachers do have their schedule, and I asked them to share it with their students via parents via their app they use or sending home their schedules so parents know when they're testing. And due to the snow day, Miss Nebraska has been rescheduled for February, April fourth for the students and some very upset little children. So Miss Nebraska will be here. Any questions? We've been having a good time.
Well, thank you. Hey, let's, uh, if it's okay with the board, we're going to change the agenda just a little bit. Ted, do you want to jump into your reports while we're waiting for Mrs. Peter to come back?
Like to visit with the building grounds committee briefly after, after this meeting to discuss the best part of the doors.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and finish yours, and then we'll come back.
Okay.
So the new elementary principal is going to be visiting all the elementary classrooms several times during the rest of the year. He will be visiting with Ms. Pritchard along for twenty to thirty minutes each time he visits a room. Of asking to visit each room three times. The purpose of these visits is for the students and teachers to get acquainted with him. And after the visits, he and Ms. Pritchard can discuss what took place. It's important to me that the new principal learn from the best. Think Ms. Pritchard is, is the best, uh, and hopefully feel more confident in his new role next fall. Uh, teacher contracts were distributed to all certified staff Monday. The contracts have some new verbiage in them uh, at the request of the board and consequently from Bobby True KSB Law Firm. Uh, that will result in an easier renewal process in the future. After this year, the board will not have to sign new contracts, uh, contracts each year to renew employment. But rather, a renewal form will go out to the staff, and if they sign that form, they are rehired. It should simplify the process. I'm very pleased about the new teachers you approved tonight, today. Southern schools will become that much better because of those people joining an already great staff. You've got, you've got a nice organization here, and I hope it continues for years.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carson and Mrs. McConnell?
Yeah, sorry, cell phones, you know, I like those. Um, for community, we're having always caffeinated out on campus on Friday. They were supposed to be here last Tuesday, and the weather kind of destroyed that, so that's kind of a celebration that we did, um, during Christmas time that kids loved, so to celebrate a good third quarter and all of their work, we'll do that Friday. Um, right now, we're planning for our junior ACT breakfast with all of eleventh grade and all of the high school staff. Um, we're going to try and make that day pretty special for them and, and really control the things that we can. I'll talk about that in a second. Prom is already next Saturday. Grand march will be at seven thirty. Um, yeah, crept up really fast. Um, something to just kind of have on your guys' radar. After homecoming, I have quite a few kids, uh, students come visit with me about the potential of opening up prom to ninth and tenth grade as well. Just the dance, not necessarily, it would not be after prom, um, or anything like that, um, or grand march. Grand march would just be if they had a date with a, they were going with a junior or a senior. Reason being, and I, I was at homecoming this year. I understand where they're coming from. There's not very many kids, so it's not a whole lot of fun for them to dance when there's thirty of them. Um, so that's something I, I put out a form, talked to teachers about it, put out a form to kids overwhelmingly. That is something that they want to do. Um, so it was too Um, so it was too close to prom this year to swing that or to put that on parents. Um, my fear was the expense to parents. Um, kids had great ideas around that about, you know, upperclassmen kind of donating dresses. Back down to freshmen sophomores. They they were great about it. So something that we're definitely probably going to pursue next year. Um, when I have the opportunity to talk to parents in August about, hey, this will be an option for them. Again, it wouldn't be after prom unless they were attending prom with a junior or a senior. Um, and it wouldn't be grand march unless they were attending with a junior or a senior. So. I was just, I was proud of them for advocating for what they thought they wanted to make it more enjoyable and it made sense to me. Um, in the classroom, it is. Almost test season and we are full speed ahead. Um, I am learning very quickly that the spring quarter is. We're lucky when we see kids because it's so crazy busy. Um, so we're capitalizing on any contact time that we have right now instructionally. Um, ACT is April first. Um, we've completed room monitor and proctor training. That was last week. Um, we're really focusing on what we can control this year. There's a lot about the ACT that I could argue is wrong and all day, but. When we went into this year, we really tried to identify the areas where. We had more control and we could leverage different things to hopefully increase student achievement. So um AC on ACT day, there will be no school except. For um juniors at the high school wing. So elementary will be business as usual, seven, eight, nine, ten and twelve will not have school that day. Reason being, I want to split kids up more. So traditionally how you guys have ran ACT is they're all in the gym. Um, not necessarily a conducive test environment. Um, I really don't want bell schedule or bells going off during ACT time. And in order to split kids up, I need more proctors, meaning I need to pull more teachers so we can proctor multiple rooms. Um, so that's exciting for everyone else. And then the juniors will be able to leave after they've completed their ACT test. Um, we'll do breakfast with the juniors that morning and then um we'll start our sessions. We'll feed them lunch before they leave and and we're hoping for a. For a really good session. Um. We are also doing the online test format this year rather than the written test format. So um research leans that. You get better performance on online, um especially with the writing portion because kids aren't used to writing papers anymore, like pencil. Paper writing. So um hopefully that works out for us. I'm excited to see how they perform. They've been killing it in ACT prep, showing up every day. Um, had to be really flexible because of weather days. They are here at. Seven fifteen and staying until four and I'm I'm just really proud of this group. Um, students started registering for classes this week. Um, the coursebook is complete. We did quite a bit of revamping um on. The previous coursebook, um couple new offerings for this year, the Nebraska um readiness math project. Um, through CCC is new for us this year. We were looking for something that. Gave our seniors and potentially our juniors a buffer um. For a math class that they weren't quite ready to take a college algebra or if they weren't going traditional college track and needed a tech math. Um, and the readiness project provided that at no cost to students or the district. Um, so we are gonna offer level one, level two and tech math next year. That's really exciting for us and. We've had a lot of juniors and seniors already capitalize on that. Um, creative writing will offer next year, we'll offer French one next year in coordination with ESU ten, I believe. Um, and then AP math courses will also go back into um the coursebook. So we'll offer calculus and statistics. Um, but those are, that's really exciting. And obviously we have a music teacher thanks to your approval. So. That in and of itself is a huge win for us. It's a huge win for kids. Um, it's been a struggle without that this year. Thanks. God for Teresa and Pam, um, because they've given us what they could, but I'm excited to actually be able to offer that for our kids. Competition, um winner activities closed just in time for spring to open. We had our honors banquet last night for basketball, wrestling in one act. Um, it was a good turnout. Booster club does an amazing job facilitating that. Um, a lot of student athletes were recognized and then spring events, our first high school track meet is already next week. Next Thursday, it's the UNK indoor invite. Um, junior highs first track meet is April ninth. Our first golf meet is the Paxton invite in Ogalala. That's April first. And then um Quiz Bowl's going, FPS is going, um FFA is. On their wind down, but rolling. I don't think it ever slows down. Um, seventh grade FPS qualified for the state tournament in Kearney. Um, FFA goes to state the first weekend of April, week into the weekend of April. So it is. Insanely busy, but if you have a chance to catch some of our kids in action, I encourage you to do that. They like to see you.
Ask a real quick question. It's gonna sound ignorant, but when we were talking to ESU sixteen earlier. You're saying we're gonna do distance learning with ESU ten?
Yes.
Is that a separate church?
Um. That will be under a grant, so not necessarily. And also, so with the ESUs. Even with like, we don't see this here, but well, we have one yellow. You can sortiate different services with different ESUs depending on who offers them. So um for example, ESU sixteen doesn't offer EL services. Um, English language learner services. That's co-opt either out of ESU ten or ESU five. So you'll see it kind of split up. Um. Mm-hmm.
So like my wife. She's thirteen now, but she still does stuff within sixteen or whatever.
Wherever.
But everything must be budgeted broke down. We're paying for that little piece if we're paying.
My wife is a grandfather job, so it's not. Most of the yes.
And we're not paying for it. So what what you see there does not include what I just said or would include it wouldn't. So. And that's actually, they're operating off.
I think what he's asking is will there be a charge?
And I'm not again, I just didn't know if everything that we is everything, is it? Itemized, are we billed per service that we're getting or is it just a, you're gonna pay this percent of your budget? Where you're gonna.
It's. It's.
That is a percentage of your.
No, not traditions, but the rest of it.
And it can be off, we can do this offline. I was just curious.
Yeah, it's a good question. Yeah.
But like we go through ESU fifteen for EL services. We don't get charged for that. That's great.
Well, that's out of title. Yeah.
That's great.
It's a hot topic.
It is.
It is. Any more questions for Mrs. McConnell?
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to come back to you, Mr. Carson. How many uh employees that we have signed up for the E and T class finally?
Six.
Awesome.
I I think it was six, but I think it means. Actually, we showed them, you showed them one two.
Okay.
Yeah, it was and 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 that's really a nice thing that the district's gonna pay the first half. And then the fire department is gonna pay the second half of that cost. So that Mr. Fear was pretty happy about it.
Awesome. Okay, let's go to the board reports. Um, anybody have or my board members, anybody have anything that they would like to bring forth at this point? Merk says next weekend or next week. I understand Friday.
Back to Phoenix.
Back to.
Back to Phoenix, the opposite. She's actually the niece of the speech coach. So Randy.
That's Brandy's niece. I didn't know that. Okay. Thanks for making that connection.
Yeah. When you're talking about the activities and then. So there is a an FFA waiting auction Thursday also.
Yes.
As in next week or this?
This. I think you are correct.
Any other comments uh to need to be brought forth? Okay, hearing that, then let's go move to item number eleven on the numerical side of things. And this is our closed session. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session for the protection of public interest discussed in the negotiation of a contract?
So.
Got it first. Do I have a second? Got a first and second roll call?
Shad Lanis.
Yes.
Janet Mueller.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Yes.
Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Kyle Stevenson, yeah.
Okay, motion carried. Uh, again, I need to reinstate. We are entering into closed session for the protection of the public interest discussed as a notion of a contract and we're going to have those six forty.
Yeah, so this would at least get us started on getting some of that other equipment out of there, bring up space so that we can. Hopefully make the second portion of this order. What do you have?
What part of this order are you bringing in currently?
All of it.
All of this?
All of it.
Or the sixty, seventy?
Well. Tax exempt, right?
Mm-hmm.
True.
So it would be the sixty-three, forty-five.
And Kyle, this is like how much of, I mean, is this half of the equipment quarter guess? What do you think you're gonna need?
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't need another one of these weight stacks. So this is like one of those plug and pully type systems. So you'd only need one of these. Um, but you would want two more of the double sided racks, the twenty-four ninety. You'd want. Four more of the adjustable benches.
So you need twenty-five grand?
Not even. I mean, the total amount.
And that would make it, you'd walk away and you'd be happy. You could get everything you wanted.
For the weight equipment, if you wanted to get, if you wanted to get, well, twenty-five grand, you can get. The exercise bikes and the treadmill and the rowing machine or whatever electrical or whatever cardio equipment you wanted to, like. The one bit I got on just the exercise equipment was twenty thousand. And that was with us getting brand new bars and everything with. The equipment. I would think for twenty-five grand, you could have a whole weight room. Done, the way you wanted it. So. Boring aspect, Bree had mentioned wanting to read the flooring. I think that could fit in. I don't know what that would cost.
Like rubber mat?
Rubber mat, yeah. And there was like stretching like turf that would go down the side too.
Isn't any, I mean, the rubber mats are just safer and stuff. Yes, wow, just plus you're, you're not chipping concrete every time you drop the.
There's lots to talk of doing like a rat on the walls.
Not to be, there's.
Mirrors or something.
There's some fundraising that the weight room committee is still gonna do. They're gonna fish fry April fourth. They're doing the breakfast for bike ride across Nebraska. What is that June, first week of June? And then um Randy has done some. Meetings with some businesses. Free, I think, with meeting with some businesses, I hear Shad maybe meeting. On just trying to. Find ways to get some funding for this so that it's not falling into the school.
It's great. Is the district match, is that the limit of ten thousand? It's a fundraising goal. Ten thousand, like ten thousand, no, are you talking about the foundation match?
Did you ever talk to the foundation to see if they'd be willing? I know you and I talked about that.
I told Adam.
We're saying really.
If you put in a request.
Okay.
For maybe ten thousand dollars because you have two classrooms in there.
Yep.
Every day. And and we'll approach it from that. I talked to Bob Lang and you talked about the two percent or the. No, four point two five or four point five percent use the that money. Um, I still get that. So I'm gonna put a plug in when we have the next meeting. For a bit for them to okay that classroom slash weight room. From the foundation.
Okay.
Like the comments that I got from our nation talked about. We donate to the foundation. Why? Why do we do that? Don't, I mean. And that was just, that was a comment, so.
Equitable donates to the Southern Public School.
And this is what Bob told me. He said, if 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 they donate five thousand dollars that a private citizen does. And earmarks it, say, I want that to go to the weight room. Every dime of that will go to the weight room, no matter, no matter about the four point fifty-five. That's what he told me.
Yeah, and that's how it should be. Yeah.
Now, I don't know.
Isn't there some uh? Some donate earmark donations that we were verifying?
Yes.
Have they been verified?
Said she was meeting with her Friday.
But, okay, sounds good.
Through the foundation?
Well, not through the foundation.
I think it's for like.
For the for the waiter project, the check is not getting.
Okay, but it it's not coming out of the foundation.
It hasn't gone to the foundation.
It's a direct donation from. An individual or the weight room.
Okay.
Is the way I understand it.
When that goes into the foundation and North Platte makes it, if you can check to the school or whomever for that amount. That's the way I understand.
Yeah, the foundation should, so the foundation really should just serve as a pass through.
That's all it's supposed to.
People can write a a check to, they can earmark it and then they get a tax write-off because it's nonprofit. It also doesn't go into our state aid formula. It doesn't show that that's income into the school. So it goes through the foundation, then the foundation. Moves it over to an activities account. But it looks like it's just a donation coming from the foundation, which then they can order equipment through. Or you can order it directly through a foundation where you, the foundation actually orders the equipment and you never have to transfer it over into the school.
Because I mean, just quick math here, guys. I mean. Fundraising goals, ten thousand, district match, ten thousand. You're starting with six or seven thousand. We've got this.
That's why I was trying to make.
I mean, we're there.
We're there as far as.
Six thousand those counting Rorick's money.
Okay.
We told you.
Okay, but still that's, yeah, over twenty-five.
Plus we just gave her, I gave her a thousand dollar check tonight from the youth burger.
Okay. Awesome.
So. I mean, with the fish fry, last time we made without that other check, we made over forty-five hundred.
Yeah.
So if you add another, in a month, we're gonna have another maybe four grand or better going. Your community. Portion of it has been met is if you're doing a ten thousand, ten thousand match.
Yeah, do you have a wish list then? I mean, if there was something, I'm not trying to be dumb, but I know.
That's what I'm saying, like getting all these racks, getting all the benches, getting that stuff that's in there out. And then like the treadmill that they got in there isn't necessarily rated for like. Industrial use, like an industrial use, it may look the same, but the order's better. And so you'd be able to have community members, kids, people. Use those regularly instead of like it. That one I made for use at a home where you use it maybe thirty minutes a day.
It's the cardio equipment. It's expensive.
So you could have some of that cardio equipment updated, boring updated, the all the weights.
And mirrors and stuff in there, make it.
Well, the mirrors are in there. They look great.
Oh, are they bad? Okay, I thought they were gone after I.
Years are in the walls. It looks nice.
Can we get a bid on the floor? That's probably a priority, I suppose.
Yeah, I think we need a bid on the flooring and I don't know, Bree may have a bid on the flooring.
Okay.
So. That also. So if we can get a bid on the flooring. And then a bid for whatever the rest of the equipment we want, other than what's being ordered, that. Fair to stand forward with. Do you want us to include like the cardio equipment that we would want in that as well?
I'd just like to see what your like dream would be and then what we can get. I mean, we can have different goals. I think that's fun.
I think this is.
Certainly, we don't have a good gym in that. Certainly, we don't have a good gym in our community. So.
I agree.
We could have some nice equipment, meaning let the community.
When you walk into Hershey's. It's nice.
Right.
And they got space where you're not gonna. Lose your clips and throw your bar on somebody else, I mean, it's.
And that's what, if we get a lot of that other stuff out of there, like these benches and racks.
You know, it's not.
You would essentially eliminate ninety percent of what's in there right now. That whole section that's right when you walk in, all the racks and benches. Every single piece of that could be taken out.
Would anybody buy any of that?
You can put it up, I mean, you might get ten dollars for some of it, you might.
I think we we will have to move that over to um to class circle.
That's fine.
Every penny you get could be used to. Update.
Everything helps. Well, I mean, your plates and everything, they just. Yeah, it is forty-five pounds, forty-five pounds.
And that's what made adding any of that stuff in, cuz we have plenty of weights. I mean. If you're gonna do that cleans and stuff, there's bumper plates in there. Someday, if we have extra money in our account, would it be great to get more of the bumper plates, yeah. Necessary right now, no.
Thanks for working on that. Yeah, I just. We needed this.
Brady done a ton of work fitting, she put together like that. Kind of the. Plan for. Advertisements or businesses being a part of this project.
Yeah, thank you for that too. I enjoy the fish fry parts of it and I thank God for guys like Rorick and all that, but it makes it pretty painless. You know, I mean, because I think if people want this stuff. We'll we'll work into it and then it's. And I thank God for those guys like Rorick out there, it's just great.
Well, I mean, it's like Randy, I said, if if there was somebody. You never know who it might be, that if you name the weight room after them, that's like Hershey's is the healer's man.
Yes.
So.
I think.
I think that opportunity may.
We have a feeling there might be someone, we'll see.
Um do we need to make a motion to adjourn?
Can't, oh, yes.
We got to set to be.
Yeah. Um uh our next meeting will be eighth at six o'clock. We have a motion to approve the next week.
So move.
Got it first, do I have a second? Motion carried, any discussion, hearing none, roll call.
If none of us made a mention.
Doug Lanis, yes, Eric.
Yes.
Bernie Booker.
Yes.
Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Kyle Stevenson, yes, Janet Mueller.
Yes. Motion carried, meeting adjourned at seven thirty.